The regular meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, March 11th, 2019, will be called to order at 7:00 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Arnett, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask everybody to take a moment. People's business. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley.
Here.
Alderman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman Peon.
Here.
Alderman Pennell Charles.
Here.
Alderman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Here.
Alderman Henson.
(laughing).
Alderman Savage.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Nice. And I would like to give a special welcome to our Acting City Attorney, Linda Stewart. Welcome.
Thank you.
We're going to have some fun with us.[475.82][475.82](applause). Ms. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Am I supposed to turn this?
Yep, press that.
This? Okay, I got it. See, I know technology. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Okay. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it. Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Alderman Pennell Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met on March 4th, 2019, at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers. Legis... You need to say something.
No. Just getting in line.
Gotcha. Legislation before the Committee, O-7-19, Special Parking Permit for Transport, Shuttles, and Contractors, Application Procedure for the Purpose of Amending the Deadline for Submission of a Special Parking Permit Application for Transport, Shuttles, and Contractors. It was recommended favorably by the Committee. And next was R-45-18, 2018, Forest Drive Eastport Sector Study, for the Purpose of Adopting the Forest Drive Eastport Sector Study as an Addendum to the 2009 Annapolis Comprehensive Plan. This was postponed. Our next meeting will occur on Monday, April 1st, 2019, at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Peon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Audit Committee will be meeting next Monday, right here in the Council Chambers, at 8:00 in the morning. Our meetings are all open to the public, and I would invite the public to appear. Part of the agenda will be discussing the possibility of, well, not the possibility of, but who we're going to hire as an auditor for the Rec. and Parks Department that we've already agreed upon. We're down to three. Just received the final bids in the last couple of days, and we need to discuss those. And hopefully, by the end of the meeting, we'll have that matter settled and get to work, do what we've been charged to do by this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give an update on Environmental Matters Committee. At the last meeting, we did get into the implementation of the No Net Loss Ordinance. I want to thank all the staff and the city manager for coming to that. And we did get it worked out. Staff is going to be clarifying the No Net Loss Legislation with the technical manual. And yes, so we're on a path towards a resolution. And we also discussed the Annapolis Waterways Cabinet, which is having their first meeting later this month. Don't recall the date off the top of my head. And also got a presentation from Public Works on our watershed restoration fund, stormwater fee. And just to highlight a few things about that, they did complete their fee study, and this is by StanTech, and outlined improvements that we need to make to our fee structure in order to pay for the watershed improvements identified by another report, the AECOM report. And, but the benefit is, when we do get around to restructuring, it will make our fee much more equitable by essentially, people who live in apartments and renting, or apartments, condominiums, will be paying less in the fee once it gets restructured to match something that's essentially matching the county's model. So that, and also highlight, we learned in the report that our total expenses for stormwater management are about $1.87 million, and the fee raises about $1.5 million a year currently. Although, I think this year's budget may have some additional tweaking of that fee. And also, in the future, Green Vest, which is a new company, they will be managing, sorry, that's not a new company, but they will be managing our stormwater program in the future. And also, they're working on two large restoration projects, one in, I believe, near Chucks and Park, and the other on Back Creek. That's about it. The next meeting will be, let's see, March 20th, and we will be discussing the sector study. And I think that's the major item of business. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee met, 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 it met last week, and we, we recommended a passage of the city-sponsored event ordinance, O-47-18. We recommended approval of the fine correction for O-3-19 sidewalk snow and ice removal. We will have a meeting March 11th, where we will ban cars from Annapolis for a week. Just checking to see if anyone's listening.[833.63][833.63](laughing). And, but we will be, we have a full schedule, and on the schedule will be the Forest Drive Sector Study, so it's third on the agenda, and we plan on getting to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? The City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, the public may speak on any item not scheduled for public hearing tonight. Legislation scheduled for public hearing are C.A.-1-19, Acting Mayor Designation, 0-42-18, Sidewalk Signs, R-6-19, Grow Annapolis Inc. License Agreement. And the first speaker signed up, please come up and say your name and address, is Sherma Welcome.
I'm a little nervous. City Council Mayor. This evening, I come to talk to you about the termination of Chief Baker. I know that I've been a resident of Annapolis for some short time, but since I've been here, I've never been involved in anything else before until I got here. And I met Chief Baker, and I met Lieutenant Kraus, and everybody from the Police Department, and several members of the council. I feel as though it was a mistake, and that he should be reinstated. He brought so much at a difficult time. And the last time I was here, and I spoke, I spoke upon the shooting that occurred, and how it affected my daughter, how it affected the people in the neighborhood and the other children. And from that moment on, he is, he was nonstop. And he brought comfort to those around the Harbor House neighborhood. He brought something that we didn't have before, and that's Eastport Working Together. And now, we have a forum, we have regular meetings, we talk to each other on a regular basis, and we didn't have that neighborly connection before Chief Baker and Lieutenant Kraus and the rest of the police department brought that to us. I feel like the crime that is being committed by individuals in the surrounding Annapolis area are stemming from our public low-income neighborhoods because they are people that don't live in Annapolis. They're people who are venturing from different demographics, whether it's Hartford County, Howard County, PG County, DC, they're traveling here to Annapolis. And that's in my observation as a resident of Harbor House. And I've expressed it many a times and many occasions with HACA that we need to try to enforce something. So I think that instead of making us lose someone who's so strong, and who is able to say, "You know what? Let's sit down and talk about this," I think that we should try to see which is next direction because even in Obama's term, four years wasn't long enough, so they gave him another four years. And even though he had two full terms, it still wasn't long enough, but he made some progress. And that's how I feel about Chief Baker. And the outpour on the forum today about him leaving, and so many people are just devastated, even my own eight-year-old, and she's eight, like, she doesn't know politics, but obviously she reads the news. And she, she was like, "What do you mean by, you know, leaving? You mean like, I'm never going to see him again?" And, you know, I said, "Yeah." So that's why I mostly came tonight, is to fight for her little voice because she don't know what to say. But she was saying a lot this morning before she went to school. But one of the things that was shared and said to me was from one of our Eastport Working Together members, as, her name is Jessica. And she said, "I strongly support Chief Baker and the work he did in Annapolis. I specifically, I specifically think that the President Street area of Eastport, not only in the crime prevention and solving, crime-solving, but in the community outreach and community interaction from Eastport Working Together, multiple meetings at Eastport Elementary, to being immediately responsive at every major incident. Chief Baker made a measurable difference in our city and community while, while he understood that he would have liked to see all neighborhoods focused on the same immediately and similar things. The very nature of the budget and logistics make it understandable to choose one neighborhood as a focus, and then use what was learned there in other neighborhoods, and then it goes so forth." But as I said before, I couldn't find anybody more stronger than him to lead us as a police chief. And I hope that maybe you all from the council and the mayor will sit down and talk about it, or maybe come to our neighborhood and have a forum with the people, and see what the people think, if we really want him to leave and find someone new because maybe the next person won't be as good as he was to us. And that's all I wanted to share this evening, and I appreciate your time and efforts of listening to us. We will be having our next Eastport Working Together meeting next Tuesday, so all are free to come. And, oh, P.S., by the way, if it wasn't for Chief Baker, I wouldn't be in leadership annarundle right now, graduating in June. So this was a strong movement, and like I said before, I just fell for anything and stood for nothing, and now I stand for everything and won't fall for anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Shamir C.H. E.R.
Thank you, Shamir. Next speaker is Judy Bunzick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Aldermen and Alderwomen. My name is Judy Bunzick. I reside at 211 Severn Avenue in the great Maritime Republic of Eastport. I have lived here for 21 years. My company's Francis Marketing Group, but I suffer from chronic volunteerism, and you probably know me through one of my many volunteer efforts. I've sponsored over 150 midshipmen at the United States Naval Academy. I produce the three Midnight Madness Holiday Shopping Events each year downtown. I'm the Secretary of the Downtown Partnership. I'm a very active member of Eastport Working Together with Shamir, among countless other activities. It's through Midnight Madness that I worked most often with the Community Services Team. When I coined the hashtag #CocoWithThePopo, I got to know them all very well. In late 2017, they developed Eastport Working Together, and through that collaborative, we saw the Hood to Good Movement evolve, the Kids Sewing Club, the Community Family Dinner. And the team encouraged me to enroll in the Citizens Police Academy, which was eye-opening to say the least. I highly recommend each of you to attend. It's no joke. If you have not done a ride-along in the last year, please do so. When the lights go on, your adrenaline will spike, and then you realize you're not wearing a bulletproof vest, and the person you're pursuing is a known drug dealer. I shuddered. If you come out of the "Don't shoot, don't shoot" simulator, we will discuss over a cold beverage, and don't ask Kevin Kraus a thing about it.[1361.58][1361.58](laughing). A few weeks ago, the Community Service Team asked me to help with their first-ever scholarship fundraiser. Unfortunately, recent headlines have overshadowed this fabulous little event, so I'm here tonight for two reasons. First and foremost, I have to state that this community is blessed to have the selfless team that we have. Lieutenant Kraus, Sergeant McGaz, Ms. Patty, Sergeant Vader, I keep doing that wrong, Vaden, Officer Sullivan, and Mr. Hudson, I'm humbled to know and collaborate with all of them. They give far more than 40 hours a week to this community, often at the expense of their personal lives. After countless hours with the team securing amazing auction prizes for the Spring Fling last week, they dragged me on Friday night to the Pip Moyer Center for movie night. A special thank you to Alderwoman Tierney, because the candy was delicious, even though I'm on a diet, I might have cheated.[1412.01][1412.01](laughing). I hope that all of you can attend the next movie night, or some representatives from the city, because it was simply fantastic. It was cops candy and kids. The turnout was a little bit light, but it was about 35 children. It was the first one of the year, so I presume it will go up from there. On Saturday, I joined the team at Anglers for a fishing fundraiser. I'm not a fishing person. And on Sunday, I proudly carried the APD banner in the parade with them. Frankly, I'm exhausted. This is every day for them. They hosted 872 community events like this in the last year, so our community service team is outstanding, and I applaud them. My second reason is I sent you all an email on March 3rd with the details of the Spring Fling fundraiser, so please, 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 share that with your constituents. This is a scholarship program designed specifically for city residents. It doesn't matter where they attend high school. Please buy a ticket. Please tell your friends to buy a ticket. Tell your community to buy a ticket, and cancel whatever plans you might think that you might have for Wednesday, the 20th. No excuses, and get ready to have an amazing time at the Spring Fling. So as you know, an anonymous donor contributed $5,000 to increase the number of sponsorships this year to seven, and five of them are in honor of Wendy, and Rob, and Gerald, and Rebecca. What you may not know is that there is another anonymous donor who has agreed to match up to $7,500 towards the scholarship fund based on the money we raised that night. We have incredible silent auction prizes. I themed it "All Annapolis Experiences." You're going to love it. But I really want all the matching funds from that donor to help our teenagers here in the city as they venture off to college or trade school. So please, help me fill the room, help me raise money for our kids. Tickets are available on Eventbrite. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work, Judy. Thank you. Next speaker, Tom Rakas.
Mayor Buckley, City Council members, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Tom Rakas. I live at 163 Prince George Street, Annapolis, Maryland. That address is the home I live in with my wife, day in and day out, and we share it with our two dogs, Lola and Zuzu. And I'm here tonight to testify on behalf of the Ward 1 Residents Association regarding O-419, Special Residential Parking Districts Parking Permits. I am a past member of the WARA Executive Board, and I currently chair the WARA Parking Committee. Based on discussions with the WARA Executive Board, other WARA Parking Committee members, and the general WARA membership, I can say that there is broad support for this legislation among the WARA membership writ large. I say broad support because there isn't universal agreement, at least universal agreement with all the provisions of the legislation. For example, the number of temporary permits that has been proposed. And that's to be expected. I mean, after all, we live in Annapolis, and everybody and their dog has an opinion on everything that goes on. And I can tell you that in our discussions, there's been some pretty heated debate on these issues because of personal and parochial concerns. However, at the end of the day, there is consensus in favor of this bill because it amends Title 12 to address a basic parking principle articulated in the city code that residential streets are primarily for parking by residents. And it mitigates the oversaturation of vehicles noted in the 2016 Parking Utilization Study. Now, to refresh your memories, among other things, that study noted that the number of valid residential parking permits exceeded the total available online, on-street parking capacity by nearly 50% in residential parking districts 1 and 2. That oversaturation continues today. And I'd also like to point out, this proposed legislation didn't just fall from the sky. Rather, it represents about a year's worth of collaborative effort among Ward 1 resident stakeholders, Alderwoman Tierney, the city manager, the Department of Transportation, the Office of Law, and SP Plus, and other city staff, where we examined the effectiveness of the Special Residential Parking Districts program. Among other things, we looked through the lenses of previous, of the previously mentioned 2016 Parking Utilization Study, the 2006 Annapolis Transportation Vision Master Plan, and the 1993 Ward 1 Sector Study. We also looked at how others address residential parking. I believe you have a chart that includes what we looked at in the other jurisdictions. So here we have tonight, for your consideration, this proposed ordinance. So here we have tonight, for your consideration, this proposed ordinance. It's good public policy aligned with 25 years. That's two and a half decades. That's a quarter of a century of study. One which is consistent with other residential parking program practices, and one which preserves the equity of Ward One residents. We trust you will support this ordinance through the legislative process. Thank you.
Next up is Steve Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman, and I live at 5154 Street in Eastport. Tonight, I'm going to—if you turn off the buzzer—I haven't started yet—I want to share with you a little analogy story. The analogy is a shipwreck. The shipwreck that I was an expert witness in the federal court on was the Titanic shipwreck. Everybody's heard of the Titanic. The others you may have not heard about was the Andrea Dorian, the Stockholm, the sinking of the Thresher submarine, the sinking of the Scorpion. All these shipwrecks have one thing in common, along with the Titanic. They all were caused by human error. So then you look at the humans, and you say, "Well, who were these people?" Well, they were experienced, but they made the wrong decision. Now, I've driven hundreds of thousands of miles in the ocean, under the water, walked on the bottom as a diver, sailed sailboats in the open ocean, and I've not had one accident or lost a single soul when I was captain of a ship, driving a submarine or a diver. And the reason was, I did it very carefully. I did it judiciously. I prepared myself. I understood the rules. I understood nature, so I didn't have a problem. But every time you don't get prepared—I was also a Boy Scout—every time you don't get prepared, it happens to you. So I'm going to cross over now and say, what about the development of Annapolis and Eastport? Who's the captain of them? Mayor—who's the mayor of the captain? Wait a minute. The mayor is the captain of great ship Annapolis. And what kind of judgment is he using? And I don't mean to make this personally, but there's a book about—it's called The Angle of Repose. The Angle of Repose is written by a very old man in a wheelchair, but he talks about where he's been, what he's done, what his granddaughter's done, and it shaped their whole life because of their experiences and who they knew. You have different experiences, Mayor, than I do, very definitely. But the one experience we share in common is, how are you going to make the people of Annapolis happy? Not love Annapolis—we all love Annapolis—but how are you going to make us happy? You're going to make us happy, and you're going to have less appeals and less people screaming in the streets of Eastport if you listen to us and slow down, be judicious about the driving of your ship, tape a couple navigation lessons—I used to teach navigation. Be welcome to chat with you. But please, slow down, navigate properly, use the code as the rules of the road in navigation, use the code, and the experts at your disposal. There are many people that want to help you, but we don't want to have another Titanic. Thank you.
Thanks. Do you have to keep everybody happy? Eric Evans is next signed up to speak.
Eric Evans, 38, City Gate Lane, Annapolis. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm here to talk tonight about the waiving of fees. You guys have two items in front of you for this evening to look at. One is for Maryland Day, the Pride of Baltimore has offered to come to Annapolis—to our city dock—and offer free tours as a community, give back to our community. The one thing they're asking in return for doing this is to have free docking space at the city dock. This is our off-season when the dock space would not be used. The true out-of-pocket cost to the city is zero. If we're not able to do this, the boat won't come. We won't be offering free tours to our community. They can go up. Our residents can go to Baltimore City and pay the fee to go aboard the boat and do the tour that way. So I ask you guys to consider letting the Pride of Baltimore be able to afford to come to Annapolis for Maryland Day. Maryland Day, just in case you don't know, there's about 40 sites that are offering free or $1 tours and activities to the community, waiving their typical fee. So it's a true partnership where everybody's giving back to make our community even better. The other one is for the Annapolis Film Festival to provide circulator services. Two of the sites that are part of the Annapolis Film Festival, Maryland Hall and Eastport Elementary, don't have tons of parking in there. So if we don't give people the option to park in the city garage and pay the city fees, and hop on that circulator and take it to those sites, the alternative is parking throughout the neighborhood streets of Eastport and Murray Hill. It also means that instead of leaving your car parked in the garage, you'll park at one site, then get in your car and drive to the next site for the next movie or the next party or lecture. So the idea of having a circulator service is to reduce congestion downtown and take people off our streets in Murray Hill and Eastport and leave that area for residential parking. I ask you guys to support the waiving of the fees for these two areas—two events. Thank you.
Hold on. Eric, Alderman on net.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Eric, when you speak, I listen, so you piqued my curiosity. Can you go through the math of the true cost to the city is zero?
For the circulator? I mean, for—the city dock—it's whether or not you guys want to charge a dockage fee. So if the dock isn't going to be—we're not going to put a different boat, like you maybe would in the summertime when the city dock is full, then you're—it's going to cost the city money. So in this case, you're—the off-season city dock is empty of boats right now, so you're not going to be putting another boat there in place, so therefore, the net cost is zero for that event. For the circulator, we really won't know to the event day, but the truth is, is some of that money—or all of that money—could be recouped in parking fees, which will not happen. If you don't have the circulator, they will all park in free spaces on the residential streets in front of your constituents.
Thank you. So we have a long tradition, we, the city, of knowingly or unknowingly waiving fees, and we get each one of these coming up, and at the last minute, and everybody says, "You can't do this to me at the last minute," and I understand that. But is there—if we start to tighten up on these fees—which is what is the intent of at least some of us—how will we work that into the mindset of all of the people that are doing these annual events in the city?
I guess you need to look at the events. I mean, these are partnership events, which means there's nonprofits working with city to make things happen, and you guys got to decide if you want to work as partners to bring quality events to town, or if you want to say no, thank you. Go elsewhere.
So your zero math—and that's why I asked you about it—is intriguing, but a lot of these are not zero math, so the people who end up paying these fees, a lot of which is overtime, are the taxpayers, who aren't really very happy with us right now, because we just raised their property tax rate quite a bit.
Well, as you know, I do over 30 events in Annapolis, and most of them do pay city fees.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Alderman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't see in the resolution where the Pride of Baltimore was offering where the tours were free, where they were no cost. Do you all have that agreement in writing?
Yeah, if you go to the marylandday.org website, you'll see all of the participating groups, and which ones are free and which ones are only $1, and that does include the Pride of Baltimore.
So a person doesn't need to do anything to register in advance?
They just need to show up with a smile on their face.
Thank you.
Alderman Savic.
Thank you, Eric, for coming out and giving this information to us. You said you do over 30 events where you haven't requested a waiver of fees?
Correct.
So what's your thinking in terms of how do you decide what—to request a waiver on or not?
So the other events, there's people making a profit. Might not be myself, but there are people making a profit off the event, and I can tell you, in these two events, there's really no profit being made. The Film Festival puts everything back into the event. Same thing with Maryland Day. Maryland Day, all 40 groups that participate lose money that day.
Is the Film Festival—is that a nonprofit, or?
It's a nonprofit.
Do you know where that money?
It gets all reinvested into the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Penn.
Mr. Mayor, I've had my question answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last one signed up to speak. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak right now? Minor Carter. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Minor Carter. I live at 13 Enclave Court, Annapolis. I'm down here to speak to the firing of Police Chief Baker. I am—I was a member of the chief's advisory committee. I would say, first of all, that it is the right of the mayor to fire any—the chief or any other—I guess, any other employee. However, there's an appropriate way to do these things, and an inappropriate way to do these things. Most firings are based on verifiable facts. I was—as I said, I was a member of the chief's advisory team. Every measurable standard of a police department has gone down during this—during his service as chief. I'm not saying that there were other factors that couldn't be, but if there are, we should know what they are. And we should know it for two reasons. One, because we ought to know why this man was fired. And two, because a firing like this without verifiable facts is a detriment to the next person we want to have. Would anybody that's highly qualified want to come to work for someplace that you don't know when or why you're fired, if you are? I mean, that's a detriment to the future of Annapolis. It's unfair for recruiting. It's too late to turn back on the present chief. I just hope in the future, we will follow a procedure that's fair and open when we make these decisions. Thank you. I'm happy for any questions.
Alderman Savic.
So do you have a fair and open process in mind that you are thinking of?
I mean, there are a lot of processes by which others—you have a city council here, where there are measurables to be given here. I mean, there are no measurables here. It's what unqualified factors were used to fire this, and if I were one of the members of the council, I'd want to know exactly what it is that is unverifiable or that's not present for public. The arrest records, everything else that the police department does, you can go in and find the records. We have no records of why this man was fired. And it's certainly—this is—the sort of thing, if you're—if you're former Chief Baker, is very detrimental to you in the future, because you've been fired, yet nobody would disclose it. So we all think the worst when that happens. You know, I mean, it would probably be better if he'd been fired for stealing pencils or something, rather than this undisclosed—these undisclosed factors. And I think it's appropriate if the mayor or the city council looked into this. I think it's very unfair to the former police chief, and I think it's very unfair in our recruiting of a new chief, because we have—he says, "Well, what are the standards here to be fired?" Well, we don't know. And I think that's a detriment to the city, a detriment to the governance, and I think that you all ought to think about this before we make any decisions like this. Other than that, I'm happy. Okay?
Thank you, Minor.
Thank you.
I'm Patricia McNally. I live at 163 Prince George Street, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the council and to the mayor for the St. Patrick's Day Parade that we had the other day. It was awesome. I was with some friends and two small children, and it went on for almost two hours. I've never seen so many little kids doing Irish dancing, ever. And I just wanted to say that it really was a great event. Everybody seemed to be happy, not just 80%. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you. If you're doing events, that was a great one to have, and it certainly showed the pride in this—in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward, state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Herrera. I live at 1601 Severn Island Court, Annapolis, Maryland. Good evening. I am here in regards to the firing of Chief Baker. As you can see, I'm really touched. I was appalled when I found out about the firing. I've worked with Chief Baker closely when I was a part of the Citizen Academy this past spring of 2018, and I have been working with him closely, a part of his monthly chief meeting that he has. Finding out about this news broke my heart, mainly because when I think of a leader, I think of him, an individual that is in his communities. And I'm just surprised as to why he was fired, the reasoning for not having a relationship with his communities and high-crime communities. I don't think it's a valid reasoning for a firing. When I think someone is fired, I would think it's because of lack of performance or falsification of something X, Y, and Z. I just don't think it's right to fire someone for quote-unquote "lack of having a relationship with his communities." Because if I look and have heard from all of the things that he has done, it would be the complete opposite. And in addition to that, I don't think it should just be up to the Annapolis Police Department to be the ones in the communities. I think, as a city, it should be everyone being involved with these communities, because one organization or one department cannot make a change if everyone's not willing to do change as well or help contribute to the community. So with that being said, I think that we need a better explanation as to why Chief Baker was fired from the Annapolis Police Department. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carolyn Markey. I live at 308 Forbes Road, Annapolis, Maryland. I wanted to get back to the previous comment, actually, and also commend the city on the job they did with the St. Patrick's Day Parade. It was really something to see the community come together like that, and to see so many young kids and families out. And that brings me to why I just wanted to say something about what Eric had asked for as far as the ship and the fees. When I was a little girl, and growing up in District Heights, which isn't too far from here—I was raised by a single mom, and one of my fondest memories is coming to Annapolis on a field trip as a young kid. And the history—I mean, I can still remember the smells and the sights, and I just think that being able to have that ship come here is a real privilege. I worked with a town on the eastern shore, and they couldn't get them to come to their dock, because it was—it was so expensive. As a business owner in Annapolis, I can assure you that March and August are our worst months. So having that history in our backyard and offering it as an access point to—for history—historical purposes—to kids in my adjacent neighborhood to my business that really don't get the opportunity to do things like that, I think it would be very valuable. get the opportunity to, to do things like that, I think it would be very valuable. There's, one, one of the things that I'd like you to kind of step back and realize is that a lot of children in our community don't always get to, to have those type of affordable experiences. And the fact that it is going to not charge, I think is very important when you consider this. So I hope that you as stewards and protectors of our city that is so rich in history that you can each vote tonight to waive those docking fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come forward. Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Chris Ladue. I live at 215 Southern Avenue in Eastport. I'm also the owner of a property downtown, which is a rental, licensed rental property. I'm here to speak tonight on 0419. As the council might recall, I spoke the first time this ordinance was introduced on First Reader and then withdrawn. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and your administration for whatever hand you had in the improvements in version 2.0. I believe it's a remarkable improvement. That said, I think as the process moves forward, I'll still have some wordsmithing and proposals for clarification with it. But tonight I wanted to talk about two headwinds, I think, that this proposal, this ordinance faces. I've handed out, the clerk has helped me hand out a sort of two-page summary of these positions. The first is that I'd like to express some, some connection here to the short-term rental issue. Last week, I emailed Director Gordon, Transportation Director, who I greatly respect. I've included his email here. And he explained, "The basis for this change is a direct result of residents' complaints about the issuance and use of temporary parking permits by non-resident homeowners. What we are finding is several non-resident homeowners are using temporary permits to provide parking for short-term rental use at properties that are not designated for rental, adding to the congestion." So this is sort of tied to the short-term rental conversations that are going on in the city. Now, what this ordinance would do is this would apply to everyone, not only the non-residents, but the permanent homeowners who are occasionally renting a bedroom or a basement suite or their whole house on Airbnb. What this would do is this would limit them to five temporary parking permits per month plus twenty-five additional. That's an eighty-five total for the entire year. As I understand the conversations going on with policymakers and a group of stakeholders, no one's talking about banning permanent homeowners who are residents of downtown from doing Airbnb. And I think they're talking about somewhere allowing them to do between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty days a year in terms of short-term rentals. So there's a disconnect between the eighty-five you would be limited to get parking passes and the amounts of people are talking about in terms of allowing people to do rentals. Not to mention, if you just have friends and families roll in at holidays or service contractors like Hydler or Coastal or Bay Cooling or BGE or Comcast. So I agree with Wura in talking to some of my neighbors downtown that there is not universal agreement that the number or the balance is right. So I think 0419 shouldn't be in isolation. It should be part of the broader conversation going on with whatever parallel ordinance or reforms are thought of through the, through the short-term rental reforms going on. The second thing I wanted to talk to you about is data. So I have submitted several Public Information Act requests trying to get data to understand what is the problem. Has there been some great uptick of these temporaries being used? You know, they're only three hundred, they're only three dollars and fifty cents. So, you know, twenty-five dollars in the garage or three dollars and fifty cents on the street, people are going to pick the street any time. So I wanted to see what's really causing all this great uptick. I understand that some people have walked up and down certain blocks and looked in the car windows for the permits, but I wanted to really understand what was going on. We don't have the data yet. I plan to come back to the council and the other hearings with the data once we receive it. But one, one data point we got from the fiscal impact note is that there would be approximately eight thousand dollars less revenue collected every year as a result of this. Well, doing the reverse math, at three dollars and fifty cents a permit, the ordinance here is going to free up two thousand two hundred and eighty-six parking spaces a year that otherwise people would use with these temporaries. On an annual basis, there are eight hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred and ninety parking spaces on the street. This ordinance is only going to free up three tenths of one percent of the capacity. It's not going to have that big a difference. So I say, where is the problem? Why are all these downtown residents having this problem? And I was, I, I agree with Wura's testimony tonight, because I did the city study, and I've asked for data to know. Based on the 2016 data, and I've asked for an uptick, you know, an update to get 2017 and 2018, there are more permanent residential passes being sold in districts one and two than there are spaces. S&amp;P says the number of 2016 valid permanent passes exceeds the total by fifty percent. On an annual basis, on an annual basis in parking districts one and two, there are one hundred and sixty-seven thousand missing parking spaces on the street. The problem, I suggest, is not the temporaries. The problem are the residents themselves. Thank you.
Mr. President, Aldman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, you said you're asking for more data, and I'm kind of interested in what you asked for. One of the things that I've been hearing recently, it seeps out of Ward One and gets over to me, and I heard it Saturday morning when I went to the presentation on the hotel, is that people, permanent residents are getting permanent stickers for people like midshipmen and keeping extra cars on the street and things like that. Is the data that you're going to get going to tell us how many stickers are issued to each permanent resident? And do you have any suspicions about what that might show?
So Ross, you're, you're on to something that I can't understand right now because under current code, the temporaries can only be bought by residents, right? And so the new ordinance, they can only be bought by residents. So I, I don't know how there's going to be less. I know they're trying to clarify the definition of resident, but under current code, only a resident can apply. To your point, I have asked for data for S&amp;P to update the numbers from the 2016 report. I have asked for granular data in terms of how many permanent passes have been sold in which districts, but not to the level of address by address. What's interesting, of course, is this ordinance would apply through districts one and five. In four, five, in three, four, and five, there's actually surpluses of parking spaces. So it's not, I'm not even sure yet why this applies through all the districts. But I'm trying to get the data because data is unbiased. And, and appreciate Director Gordon's input as well as to the cause for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Keep dropping the pen. Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? How you doing?
My name's Cindy Borchard, and I live at 900 Voucher Avenue in Eastport. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for letting us talk today about waiving the fees for the Pride of Baltimore. I know I spoke to Councilman Arnett today about, about that very thing. I have been a volunteer at Chesapeake Children's Museum for three years now, and I know you all know Debbie Wood. She's a great community member. One of the things she, so we've, I've been helping her do this, this is my second year doing Maryland Day. And so one of the things, you know, somebody wants to participate in, it has to be free or a dollar. So they are, no, none of the partners can participate for, you know, and charge a lot of money or anything like that. So the, one of the things that the Pride of Baltimore Representative Erica Denner said to me was that every time they come to Annapolis, there's just always these great crowds. They get the best crowd. And I just think it's so wonderful that they're offering to do all three days of Maryland Day weekend for free and to offer them the dockage, to waive the dockage fee would just be one of the things that makes Annapolis great as far as, you know, bringing a big ship in. I'm sure it's going to curtail all those other ships that want to come here and dock in the summertime if they can't recoup some of the costs involved by charging a fee, FYI. I mean, as an aside, but thanks for letting me speak today.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else like to come forward and speak? Okay. Seeing no motion in the chamber, I declare comments by the general public closed. Miss City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is update from the mayor.
All right, not too much. Here you go. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. March is an exciting month in the city. Yesterday, we had a great St. Patrick's Day Parade. I want to recognize our parade marshal, who volunteers, marshals who volunteer their time and go through training. Yesterday's lead marshal was Tom Cagle. Thank you, Tom, and the eleven other marshals on the route. Thank you also to the members of the Unified Command. David Mandell at Office of Emergency Management, Battalion Chief Robert Christian of Annapolis Fire, and from Annapolis Police, Lieutenant Brian Della. Also, all of the personnel from Public Works and Transportation operating en route in the field to keep the parade running smoothly and the public safe. I want to thank Felicia Nolan, Special Events Coordinator. The parade was a great event ending at City Dock. I was down there. I saw the people going back and forth into the historic district. What an incredible economic driver for the city with people staying after the parade and doing weekend shopping and dining out. We heard the hotels in the city were sold out. Great job to everybody, and thank you. Tonight, happening right now, in fact, is the march for our schools over on Rose Boulevard in the front of the General Assembly. They expected upwards of seventy-five hundred people to come by bus from around the state for a First Amendment march to support public school teachers. I want to thank the teachers for showing up and our Annapolis Police, Fire, and Office of Emergency Management, as well as transportation staff for dealing with the logistics and road closures. One of the march events came up later this, this month, and I'm excited about, is the Annapolis Film Festival, which will take place on March 21 to March 24 at locations around the city. I just found out the opening night film will be "The Public" with Emilio Estevas, Alec Baldwin, who does a great Donald Trump, Christian Slater, Taylor Schilling, and Jenna Malone. In all, the festival will host seventy-plus films over four days. I know I will be attending as many as I can get to, along with the parties and panels and Q and A's. It should be great fun, and I encourage everyone to get tickets. I will see you all at the movies. Congratulations to our Department of Public Works. Last week, our water treatment facility won Maryland Green Building Council Winter Green Award. Our water treatment facility is a state-of-the-art in terms of its treatment of the city drinking water that is safe and tasty. But the facility is also one of the most environmentally friendly public utilities or otherwise in the city of Annapolis. It is a Silver Level Lead certified for energy efficiency standards and environmental design, environmental design. Congratulations to the team. They attended an award banquet in Baltimore last week and were very surprised to win. Good job. The Urban and Regional Information System Association named our city GIS coordinator, Sean Wampler, the Distinguished Single Process System Award for the most efficient services that save the government money. Congratulations to Sean. We have some very smart people working in our city. It's Women's History Month. Here in Annapolis, I'd like to take a few minutes to reflect on some of the accomplishments of Annapolis women. Anne Catherine Hoof Green took over the Maryland Gazette in 1767 when her husband unexpectedly died. At a time when women were expected to play a domestic role, Mrs. Green was left in debt with a print shop to look after along with six children. She took over uninterrupted publication of what was then the only newspaper in Annapolis. In order to juggle family, her family duties, she moved the print shop into her home. Within three years, she paid off her late husband's debt, bought the property at 124 Charles Street. In 1921, Eliza Sadam became the first paid librarian and the founder of what is now the Anorundal County Public Library. She ran the operations out of historic, the historic Reynolds Tavern, and she was paid a monthly salary of twenty-five dollars. In 2001, and I learned something on this, Ellen Oosterling Moyer was elected to the job of mayor of the city of Annapolis. Her election was the first time a woman served in the top job in the city's 293 years history. Before that, she served fourteen years on the city council. Among her accomplishments, she established the Annapolis Conservancy Board, the city's greenscape program, and a close friendship with Ross Arnett. Just checking.
And arts and public processes.
And lots, a million other things.
Yes.
There have been twelve female members on the city council, starting in 1973 with the election of Barbara Newsted, in 1985 Ruth Gray, and M. Theresa DeGraff in 1987, Ellen Moyer in 1994, Louise Hammond in 1997, Sheila Tolliver, and Cynthia Carter in 2001, Julie Stankovich, one of my favorites, in 2005, Sheila Finlayson, in 2013, Rhonda Pindell-Chiles, and in 2017, Ellie Tierney and Shinni Kohenson. Which brings us to today. We have a fully, half of the city council is female. Not twenty-five percent, not thirty percent, half. Think that for a minute. This city council in gender looks more like the city's population than at any time in our 311 years' history. I'm proud to have appointed the first permanent female city manager in Theresa Sutherland. She is doing a fantastic job for our city, and as you may already know, but will surely learn in the state of the city next month, has taken the city's financial management into a new millennium with policies and procedures to put accountability at the forefront. Take the time to more, learn more about women in your community and your life or in your family for Women's History Month. I've held a number of community meetings and residents, with residents from Ward Four and Five, to discuss ideas and opportunities to upgrade Public Works along Spa Road, balance the needs of community, and link some of the pedestrian and bicycle paths to Maryland Hall, the Annapolis Senior Center, and other locations that will serve young and old alike. These meetings included talks at the American Legion last week, but also resident meetings with people from homes on the glen, Truckston Heights, the Annapolis Neck Peninsula Federation, Spa Creek Conservancy. Overall, there has been a positive reception. I look forward to exploring these ideas and continue these conversations. I also had the opportunity to present to leadership Anorundal, a great organization helping to nurture great leaders in our community. I know that four of our aldermen and women are graduates of the program. It was a lively crowd at Market House, and we got, we got great questions from the audience. Finally, earlier this month, I was able to speak to Anorundal County delegation in the Maryland General Assembly. I got to talk about resiliency, some of our plans for City Dock and Hillman Garage. And one of the things I'm happy about is the margin by which the payment in lieu of taxes or pilot funds were approved in the House by a forty-six to zero vote and the Senate by a hundred and thirty-five to five. I want to thank Senator Sarah Althruth and Speaker Mike Bush for writing and filing this legislation. We will receive a mandatory state spending and nearly twice of what we had previously been allocated from the governor for our expenses that we incur to host state agencies, the governor, and legislators, legislators here in the city. The margin looks veto-proof, so I'm hoping the governor either signs the bill or lets it become law. And thank you very much for that long speech there. it become law, and thank you very much for that long speech there. You're all still here.
Second?
Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is required administrative submittals presented by the city manager.
Ms. Sutherland, would you like to give some?
Thank you. The only required submittal I have for this meeting is a budget transfer of $13,500 within the Office of Law from salaries and to legal services to provide funds to hire outside attorneys as needed if there's a conflict of interest or the need for a special expertise. And the transfer is $13,500, all within the same department, same fund.
Questions? Thank you. Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include approval of Journal of Proceedings, CCM 021119, regular meeting minutes, CCM 000519, special meeting minutes, and CCM 022819, special meeting First readers. 0-4-19, special residential parking districts - parking permits referred to Public Safety Committee and the Transportation Committee. R-11-19, Annapolis City Dock, Urban Land Institute, Baltimore Technical Assistance Panel, January 29, 2019, report, quote, "Reclaiming a local and national treasure," end quote. R-12-19, civil service positions and classifications, Risk Management Administrator. And I believe that's the end of that.
Are there any objections to items on the consent calendar? Alderman Peon?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any objections, but will any of these be assigned to committees? I know it's on the consent calendar for now, but it looks like maybe one or two of these might need some further, a little bit of further work.
If you put a request in, Regina?
Yeah, I believe 04-19 is going to Transportation.
Well, the, seems like the ULI report is, while, very well done, it probably bears some review by, I'm not sure which committee, but certainly some, yeah, rules. When in doubt, I always say rules, but.
Mr. Mayor, I think, sorry, to interrupt, it goes to your comment, Alderman Peon. Annapolis City Dock, it's under title, I forgot what title, but under Economic Matters. So if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd rather it be referred there.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, the City Dock, downtown Market House, everything is under Economic Matters Committee, so I'd prefer that it be sent there.
City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out that R-1119 and R-1219 are both resolutions. Under your processes, resolutions go to standing committees only when requested, so you can certainly request that it go to that standing committee, but it is not, it doesn't go there automatically because it's a resolution.
Thanks, so I'll go ahead and request it. Thanks.
Alderman Tierney?
I think I just want to clarify that R-1119 is not an adoption of the report. Thank you.
Sorry, one more question. Madam City Clerk, more for you. Do we add it as a sponsor for an item on the consent calendar? Can we just do that without actually taking it off? Could you please add me to Annapolis City Dock, R-1119? Thanks.
Okay, hearing no objections, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
All those in favor, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Peon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell-Chauncey?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Mahenson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings beginning with Charter Amendment CA-1-19, Acting Mayor Designation, for the purpose of amending the procedure for designating an acting mayor.
Okay, we have no one signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak on this topic? Okay, I declare the public hearing on CA-1-19 closed. Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing on Ordinance 0-42-18, Sidewalk Signs, for the purpose of authorizing sidewalk signs with certain conditions, providing a definition of sidewalk sign, and providing for a delayed effective date of the sidewalk sign permit fee.
Okay, we have one person, Carolyn, signed up to speak. You still here?
Hi, my name is Carolyn Markey. I live at 308 Forbes in Annapolis, Maryland. As far as the sidewalk signs go, I understand there's a need for regulations, consistency, safety, but when I looked at the description, I guess, of what's being proposed, and it seemed like there was a requirement to actually attach this sidewalk sign to the actual building, and that kind of defeats the whole purpose with its view being obstructed by those business owners or businesses that also have cafe permits. The sign would then be behind the tables. So likewise, and I'm not sure how many business owners actually live in the city of Annapolis, so I'm not sure how many that you actually spoke with to be able to get their opinion on this, but I would encourage you to make sure that you've involved enough business owners on this if you haven't already. Anyway, like those of us that, businesses that have not been around for 50 years, it gets very challenging for us to be able to show how we are unique and different, and these sandwich boards allow us to do that. And the other thing is with our hotels, I get about 42% of my business, my overall business, from the adjacent three hotels, and that's because Annapolis is such a walkable community. Everybody walks in Annapolis, and so those sandwich boards really are a way for us to convert those walkable customers into actual customers that are purchasers. And I'm not sure if you realize that a good portion of our business is from the walkable, the walkable traffic. Just in the fourth quarter of 2018, in talking with the GMs from the adjacent hotels, they had seen a 47% decrease in the occupancy rates, and those occupancy rates are the people that are doing a lot of the walking. So these signs allow me, as a business owner, to highlight the specials, and with the ordinance that the, the sign ordinance that the city has already in place, that it's very strict and very limited, it really doesn't allow us, business owners, to be able to show how we differ from the business next door. So I would ask that you consider not having these signs connect to the actual buildings. I'm fine with regulation and consistency and a permit, I get that, I understand why that's needed. I really hope that, if you haven't already, again, just let me stress, please involve business owners. We can't always come to these meetings. In fact, I stream them live at our place, just because I can't even always get out here a lot of times. So anyway, that's all I have to say. I just hope you do not require, have the requirement that it attaches to the building.
Carolyn, hold on one second. Alderman Tierney?
Yes, I paused to respond to public testimony, but I just want, as a point of clarity, there is no provision, it reads that the sidewalk sign shall not be permanently affixed or anchored to the sidewalk or attached to the structures, and that the intent of this legislation is to legalize the sandwich boards. They're currently, they are not legal, so the intent is to legalize something that currently exists. And while I have the floor, I have a request for, I would recommend that HPC review this legislation specific to the guidelines for the review of the HPC.
Thank you. So they can't be attached to the building, so that's.
Oh, I thought it was just, they cannot be attached to the sidewalk.
No, they can't be attached, no attachment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak on this?
Good evening, Eric Evans, 38, City Gate Lane. With any legislation, there's always division on it, but I think I could hear some of the feedback as well that Carolyn was referring to, and while not being attached to the building, I do believe that the legislation states that it has to be adjacent to the building. And what some of the restaurants are concerned about is if you put the sign against the building, that means they have to take out cafe tables in order for people to be able to see the signage. And if that's the case, maybe an easy compromise is just to say that if it's a restaurant with a cafe license, that the signs would be included in the cafe seating area, because we do understand we got to take care of ADA requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Chris Ladoo, 215 Severn Avenue. I wanted to raise a couple points with the legislation. Well, the first point has to do with this idea that the sandwich board signs have to be adjacent, on the sidewalk, adjacent to the building. Ross, as you know, in Eastport, the sidewalk signs are used to point to the direction of the antique store on Severn Avenue, several blocks away with permission of the school. It's used to direct people to Wild Country Seafood, which is hard to find if you're not a local. So I think in some of the other wards, when I go around, I see sandwich board signs, which is the point of the signs, right, is to say, hey, down the street is this, or down the street is that. So I think, I think for Eastport specifically, and I don't want to speak for your other wards, although I frequent your wards, I think maybe here there should be some allowance for people to be able to, with permission of whoever or whatever the sign is in front of, to be able to direct people to businesses, you know, a short ways away. The second thing I want to talk about is, and by the way, that was on page four, lines 44 and 45. The other thing I'd like to talk about on page five and lines 14 through 20 is this idea of indemnification, that the permit holder is going to indemnify the city, and then the city is going to have, be an additional assured on a commercial general liability policy. I don't think that really works, and I'll defer to the city attorney, and I don't know who our chief risk officer is, but given governmental immunity and the fact that commercial general liability policies do not cover indemnification agreements generally, I'm not sure being an additional assured on insurance policy is going to do anything for the city. I think what we're looking for here is an indemnification bond, so that they agree to indemnify, which doesn't mean anything if it's an LLC or they don't have any financial wherewithal, but you have them agree to indemnify, and then you have them post an indemnity bond. So I would suggest that would be a better construct to protect the city from liability. A couple other things for the city attorney. I'd point out that in the definition of sidewalk sign, it says a sidewalk sign has no moving parts. You know, a lot of them I see move. The other thing in prohibited signs, we have a quirky kind of situation here where we say prohibited signs are portable signs, but not including sidewalk signs. Ideally, you'd want to put that in the definition where you'd say portable signs do not include sidewalk signs, but we don't have a definition of portable signs. So maybe that, that can be, I defer to the city attorney in appropriate statutory drafting, but it would seem to me that it'd be more appropriate to kind of put that into a definitional section. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come up and speak? Accepting to the record memorandum to the Annapolis City Council for the Planning Commission dated February 7, 2019, and a memorandum from the Director Gutwold to the Planning Commission dated December 18, 2018. I declare the public hearing on 0-42-18 closed. Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. I had asked that a letter from the David and Gail Groey be submitted to put in the record. It's regarding the 419, not specifically one of the public hearings, but while I'm thinking of it and we're making the record, I would like to make sure this gets.
Yep, we're coming up to.
It's been distributed to all members of the council, and I think they emailed everyone from what I could tell last evening.
She was supposed to be here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing on Ordinance 0-8-19, Grow Annapolis Inc. Lease Agreement, for the purpose of approving the lease for certain city-owned property located at the corner of Jefferson Street and Brashear Street, Annapolis, Maryland, 21403, between Grow Annapolis Inc. and the city of Annapolis, and matters generally relating to said lease.
Okay, we have one person signed up to speak. Kathy Umfree, please come forward.
Yes, hello, everyone. I'm Kathy Umfree. I live at 19 Glen Avenue in Annapolis. I am currently the chair of Grow Annapolis, so perhaps it comes as no surprise that I stand in support of the lease agreement, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everybody who worked so hard to bring it about. Grow Annapolis is a very small, all-volunteer nonprofit that works to get people to grow food and eat healthily. We do this by promoting community gardens. We build, maintain, and manage them in the city of Annapolis. We have had our first presence in 2010 under the Cohen administration. We were given the opportunity to use our current site under the Panalitis administration, but it hasn't been until now that anyone has offered us a long-term formal agreement with the city. The Eastport Gardens have to be probably our most successful gardens to date. That's largely due to the Eastporters. It's a wonderful neighborhood, and everyone who goes to the garden, there's 27 individual garden plots, always they're fully booked. These people generally walk to the gardens, and they take a great deal of pride in the gardens. We are currently building a relationship with the Eastport United Methodist Church across the street by helping to grow food to give to their food pantry. They have a monthly food pantry, and we have been donating fresh produce to that. And we also provide a garden for, an after-school program to help kids learn how to grow vegetables. So we would like to see these benefits to the community continue, and so we really look forward to working with the city for another 10 years. Thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
And you have a nice cookbook, too.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much.
Very nice party last fall. I certainly, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor on this, and I notice it's not assigned to any committee. I would think it would be appropriate to go to Finance because it's a lease, but it certainly needs to go somewhere. Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, and I'd also like to be added as a sponsor. Kathy, what happened to the garden that was next to the old rec center on St. Mary's Street?
Well, that was our original garden, and of course, because the. Well, that was our original garden, and of course, because the property was sold, the Eastport Garden actually sort of was the one that we got as a result of the closing of that garden.
That's what I figured. Thank you.
Alderman Annett?
We should thank Chief Stokes for helping make this happen. It's a really, it's a nice spot in Eastport, but it's a spot for everybody.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. And thank you so much for all the work that you do.
Well, thank you.
And I would like to, at some point, schedule a meeting with you, invite you to the Environmental Matters Committee to talk about, if you're interested in finding locations to expand the program, definitely be in our interest.
We are, but we are small, so we have to grow and to keep on growing, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to come forward and speak on this? Okay, I declare the public hearing on O-8-19 closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second readers, beginning with ordinance O-6-19, the conveyance of part of the unimproved portion of the city-owned right-of-way containing the roadbed of Castle Gate Drive to Lee et al., LLC. For the purpose of approving the conveyance as part of the unimproved portion of the city-owned right-of-way containing the roadbed to Castle Gate Drive to Lee et al., LLC, expressly authorizing said conveyance to be made at private sale and not at public auction, and matters generally relating to said conveyance.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt O-6-19 on second reader?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, is there a motion to adopt O-6-19 on third reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Sir Mayor Buckley.
Yes.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Henson.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
Okay, eyes have it. Thanks, Mr. Lee. We appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-6-19, Annual Statement of Performance Standards, for the purpose of approving the annual performance statements filed by city agencies and departments.
Is there a motion to adopt R-6-19 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Sure. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Henson.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
We didn't have, were you going to raise some discussion? We didn't have time for discussion.
Alderman Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Taking a look at them, I would, so I understand that this was the first year that we had them, so thank you to the city manager for collecting them, or the city manager for requiring them, and the city clerk for collecting and gathering them. And going through them, I didn't think it was appropriate to raise any amendments to them, even though the code gives the council the authority to do that, because we didn't have a venue to sit down with the department heads to see why they made some of the decisions that they made. I noticed that some of them were absent any training provisions or any goals for the staff that were in the departments. And I would, I would have thought that some of them would have had that. I would have liked to have seen some of the performance measures include their goals and assessments of the staff that are carrying out the mission. Some of them had just very bare goals. The police department had reduced Part One crimes. It didn't say how. It didn't say, you know, anything other than reduce Part One crimes. So things like that, I would have liked to have gotten the opportunity to flesh out with the different department heads. When we take this up in future years, I would ask that we have it as a work session, and we make room in the work session schedule for that, so that we can engage the department heads on that. If it's more appropriate to refer to the corresponding committees, I'm happy to do that as well, but whatever the appropriate vehicle, next year when we take this up, I would like the opportunity to engage the department heads so that we can exercise our due diligence of making any necessary or amendments as we see them in representing the community members that engage these different departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Henson. Alderman Annett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the city manager or the finance director. Will these be part of the departmental submissions or some form of the, some abbreviated form? I understand we're going to go back to goals and objectives and performance measures as part of the budget.
The fiscal year 2020 goals and objectives will be part of the fiscal year 2020 operating budget.
Thank you.
Alderman Penn?
Could be another time when we can discuss these things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that Alderwoman Henson would agree with me that one of the bigger complaints we've heard on the audit committee is that there is a, has been a lack of standards for performance to be compared with. It's been a handicap in trying to do or seek out performance audits, because there's nothing to compare. There's no goal. There's nothing for an auditor to say, in many cases, not all, but many cases, whether or not a department has met their goals, if they're performing up to the standards that they've set. And I wholeheartedly support this. Some of these may not be what we want them to be, but boy, it's a whole lot better than what we've had in the past. I think our city manager is probably responsible for that, and I thank you, thank you very much. It makes our job easier. Not necessarily department's jobs easier, but ours easier. And while I have the mic, Dr. Lee has left, but I just want to make sure for the record that it's said that when my colleague from Ward Three and I are separately sitting in his dental chair with our mouths open and helpless, just to make sure he understands that we voted for this, okay? Just want to make that clear.
Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding this resolution, I just wanted to say that I've told my constituents, if they have any doubt as far as the quality level of our departments or their, you know, moral compass, I would recommend, this is some heavy-duty nighttime reading, but I was very impressed with it. I do have a question for the city manager, and it might be one of those careful what you wish for questions, but, I mean, as far as, it says here, whereas Section 2.60.040 provides that the city council shall conduct a public hearing with regard to each performance statement, what does that mean? I don't mean to stump, I mean, would we have to have a public hearing on each submittal? Page one?
Oops. Did you have a public hearing? Do you have public hearings on all resolutions? I'm asking the city clerk. Okay, then.
Not unless they request it.
Okay, well, then, we may not have met this requirement, then. Because it's done by resolution.
Resolution.
If there hasn't been a public hearing on it, then I would agree with the Alderwoman that we.
Excuse me, Jacqueline said that this was on the agenda for a public hearing at the last meeting.
Oh, it was, for a public hearing? Thank you, Jacqueline.
So that, so that addresses, so that takes care of it, then? We don't have to have a public hearing for each? Cool, great, thank you.
Thank you for remembering that, because I didn't.
They all blend into one sometimes. Okay, thank you. A little out of order there. I apologize. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-7-19, Nonprofit Vendors During Fall Boat Shows, for the purpose of authorizing sales by certain vendors in the city dock area of the historic district during the fall 2019 United States Sailboat and Powerboat Shows.
Is there a motion to adopt R-7-19 on second reader? Second. Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Oh, Alderman Henson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderwoman Tierney, I saw you were the sponsor of the resolution. Who curated the list? I was trying to, is it diversity in the group of nonprofits? I see that Mount Zion United Methodist is there. Some of the nonprofits, I'm not familiar with who the, what the membership is, but was, did these groups approach you? Did you approach the groups? How did we get to this select list of nonprofits?
Our special events coordinator received applications, and this was an ongoing thing with the boat show. And 2000, I'm not sure of the year, my predecessor sponsored this legislation, special events legislation, and one of the requirements of the special events ordinance were that we would have to identify these nonprofit vendors. And the list, as I said, has been now codified. I believe we're receptive to adding to it, but these, that answers your question, but it was Felicia is the special events coordinator.
And people made applications to Felicia, and it was everyone that applied, is what we see here?
Yes. She, I'm positive she has all that documentation.
I got to go to the boat show for the first time, and I would have to say, I saw two other black people there, and one of them was German, and I was like, okay. It would be nice to see some diversity in the boat show. And when I saw this, I thought, oh, this might be a great opportunity, because it can be pricey, and that's not to say diverse groups can't afford or are not interested in paying the cost, but I thought this might be a good opportunity to change it up a little bit there. But I see, the process is you apply, and then from those applications, then we've curated this list, so thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, just a little bit of clarification for Alderwoman Henson. These groups have been involved with the boat show for many, many years. Mount Zion is my church in Eastport. They are not inside the boat show. Their vendor space is outside. So for example, on Compromise Street, the church booth and the Optimist Club. Across the street is where the St. Mary's group is. And the groups that have been added to the list most recently, say within the last two or three years, are the Boy Scouts. But the space is very limited, because the boat show continues to grow, even the space where the church and the Optimist Club are located. Their footprint has shrunk, because the boat show, as I said, has gotten larger. So I'm not sure there would be room for other groups. These have just been the traditional groups. There has been, and it came to the forefront a number of years ago, because a fee was charged for these nonprofits. Not all of them. Certain nonprofits got a fee charged, and others did not. So somewhat of a controversy was brewed from that. So to codify everyone's participation, we have the resolution.
Thank you for the history lesson there. If diversity with this ever becomes a priority and space is limited, then maybe we just have to prioritize or have some sort of rubric for evaluating which of them, in certain years, you know, if we trade off or if we do other things to attract a diverse group. And I don't know if these groups represent diversity. Your church was the only one that I was familiar with in terms of the membership there, but thank you.
So Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I don't know if Alderwoman Tierney knows the answer or perhaps the city manager, but do you know how many, were there other groups that applied and didn't make the cut for whatever reason, or is this?
I do not know the answer to that, as my colleague Alderwoman, Sheila, Sheila said that they were existing. I don't think there was an application process at the time.
Okay, I can tell you, my go-to crab cake at the boat show is the Mount Zion crab cake.
Oh, my God, the food is so good.
When I'm parking cars at Annapolis Elementary, where my kids go to school, I run across the road, and I get about three or four of them. Okay. So we're going to call the roll, please. Madam City Clerk? So we've got a first and a second on that.
Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Peon.
Aye.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Henson.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-8-19, Itinerant Merchant Sales in the Historic District, 2019, for the purpose of authorizing Hawker, Peddler, and itinerant merchant sales in the historic district in conjunction with certain special events during calendar year 2019.
Is there a motion to adopt R-8-19 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Sir Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Peon.
Yes.
Alderman Pendell Charles.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Alderman Henson.
Aye.
Alderman Savage.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Tierney.
Aye.
Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-9-19, Pride of Baltimore II Docking Fee Waiver, for the purpose of waiving the fees for docking the Pride of Baltimore II at the Annapolis City Dock on March 25, 2019, and March 29 through April 1, 2019, in celebration of Maryland Day.
Is there a motion to adopt R-9-19 on second reader?
Aye. So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Do we need a second?
Your second?
I moved it. There needs to be a second.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks.
Alderman Henson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, the last time that we entertained a fee waiver, I did ask at that time that we, as a part of the staff report and fiscal impact, have contacts for the fee waiver, and we have an understanding of what fees we are waiving, how often we are waiving fees. It would help me make sure that we were keeping our fee waivers fair and consistent, and also help me understand what the dollar amount were, and if we were reaching like a critical mass, a point where we were waiving a lot of fees, or if this was just something that was small in scale with the city budget. And I don't see that we have that information attached where I could give context to the decision to waive the docking fee or not. So that will, my vote on tonight will reflect on my inability to be able to consider it in context. I have to look at this just in a vacuum, and that makes me uncomfortable.
Can I get some clarification from the city manager?
Ms. Henson, I thought that the Office of Finance provided you with the schedule of the fees that had been waived in fiscal year 2018.
One of my colleagues who's on the finance committee did allow me to view a hard copy that they had.
Okay.
But I didn't see it here, so that the public also had the benefit, and so that I, when I was home and I was doing my reviewing, so that I could reflect back. Because I know it's a moving document. It's not something that's always the same, because, you know, one thing may happen, or the document is living. And so when you have a hard copy that's printed off, and you don't have something that's kind of attached to this, it didn't give me the ability to consider it.
Okay, I thought, that is my misunderstanding. I thought you asked for a schedule of the fees that were waived in 2018, and that you had been provided with that. So I'm sorry for that misunderstanding.
And if I am overlooking something that you sent me, then my apologies.
No, I didn't. I thought that you had already been, some, I don't remember who. Somebody told me, I gave it to her. I said, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Alderman Tierney?
I just have a question on the fiscal analysis. It might just be wordsmithing, but it says that this resolution will reduce the docking fee by 2,550. So is this a complete waiver of a docking fee, or is it a reduction in a docking fee that?
It's a full waiver.
It is a full waiver.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Annett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So while I was impressed with Mr. Evans' zero cost to the city argument, I was also impressed with the document that the finance committee was given that may still need some refinements, but showed us waiving. refinements, but showed us waiving several hundred thousand dollars worth of fees each year. That doesn't mean that those costs go away. It just means that it's passed on to the taxpayers instead of whoever's holding the event. And I continue to resist voting for these waivers. And until we can get some better definition, I'm not clear in my own mind exactly what that would be. It used to be if it was a nonprofit, it would be in one status. If it was for profit, it would be in another. And they're the ones that are the city-sponsored versus ones that come along on a regular basis. So, again, I'm, I'm going to be voting no, not because I don't approve of the event and not because I don't love the pride. I always loved seeing it in the harbor. But we've got to do something about figuring out this waiver of fees. It's just gone on too long. And it particularly was startling when the new city manager gave us the schedule of fees, many, many hundreds or tens of thousands of dollars of which we were not even aware we were waiving. So, I, I do urge the council that we've got to sit down and come up with something better than what we have now to address these fees.
Alderman Penn, next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I share comments of Alderman Henson in that I, I don't really have any idea what costs we are waiving. I mean, I know that our fee would be $25.50. But what out-of-pocket expenses do we have here, if any? Maybe we don't have any. I don't know. But I suspect we do have some. It may not be an awful lot. So, I'm not exactly sure what I'm waiving. Now, I have to say, Mr. Mayor, that at lunchtime today, I was pretty adamant that I was not going to vote for this. I mean, I was not going to vote, yeah, I was not going to vote to waive this. But Mr. Evans brought up a couple of pretty compelling points. This is empty space that wouldn't be rented out anyway. It's not like there's this huge demand for this particular space in the off-season. And I think that, given the fact it will bring people downtown, it will, people who spend money, that overall, it's a good idea. But I, I share Alderman, Alderman Henson's concerns that she doesn't feel like she knows what we're waiving, and neither do I. Maybe, boy, I hate to do this, but maybe postponing a final vote is, I know there's some time constraints, but I don't totally know what I'm voting on. I mean, $25.50, I know I'm voting to waive that, but I don't know what our, what loss there is to the city otherwise. I guess theoretically, it's supposed to be about $25.50. But I would like to have something in front of me that tells me that.
Should we let the city manager clarify?
So, under Section 604210 of the code, and B, it says, "Whenever a person leases, uses, or occupies a city facility, the person shall be charged and pay a minimum of full fees for the use of the facility." When you look at the definition of city facility, it includes dock, pier, wet slip, mooring, developable waters, whatever developable waters are. So, our docking fees for this space at the city dock is the amount of revenue that you are waiving. So, we are not going to collect that revenue. The expenses we will incur for the harbor master, I agree with you, they're probably pretty minimal. But that's not the point. The code requires us to collect the fee. The only way to not, to not collect the fee is if you pass a resolution waiving it. So, the effect of passing this resolution is a loss of revenue.
Well, I guess I, I'm concerned that any Tom, Dick, or Harriet that comes along and wants that space may be expecting it to be rented to them for free. Now, not that the Pride of Baltimore is any Tom, Dick, or Harriet like Alderman Arnett. It's, it's wonderful to have them in town. I, you know, I love having them here, having them here. But I'm a little concerned that there'll be other people that maybe many of us wouldn't regard as being nearly as attractive as a pride that will come in here and legitimately ask for a waiver of fees. I don't know. I mean, I'm still a little bit on the fence here. But I, I, I'm concerned with the precedent in addition to the other things that I, that I've already said. Thank you.
Alderman Savage, then Alderman Rodriguez, then Sheila.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, in general, I do think we, we need to be very careful when we waive fees very deliberate in light of the total 300-some thousand a year that we do waive. But in this case, I do think with the Pride of Baltimore, there is no cost to the city. There's no staff cost, no equipment cost. If it's not, if the, if the slip's not filled, then it's, you know, nobody else is going to come in this time of year. I think I find, I, I find that a very compelling argument. It's a little different, if I understand it correctly, we'll get into this with the next resolution, a little different than the Circulator or when we waive events and we're essentially waiving fees that would go to pay for the police coverage or fire or whatever, what have you. This is kind of very different in my mind, not to mention the nonprofit, which I think is important to factor in. But I do sympathize with the sentiment. I really, I do think we need some kind of clear process and standard. And that's why I asked Mr. Evans those questions. And maybe we can talk about this more in Economic Matters Committee in the future. So, with that, I do intend to support this resolution tonight.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. I don't know who to direct it to, but I just wanted to confirm whether the Pride of Baltimore II docking at City Dock is contingent on us waiving the fees. It is? They'll only come if we waive the fees. Thanks.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still need clarification because this does say it will reduce docking fees by $25.50. Did we count this amount in our budget for this current year?
All, all revenues are estimates in the budget. And so, we wouldn't have said, well, the Pride of Baltimore is going to come here, but they're not going to, we're going to waive the fees, so let's not include that in revenue. We're just looking at revenues from all docking fees all year long and doing an estimate of what we think the revenue's going to be.
So, we were not counting on this trip?
We weren't counting on this revenue specifically. We're not counting on anybody's revenue specifically. We're just saying historically, this is how much revenue we get from docking fees.
Right, and we have a, a history. So, we can go back and look at previous years' revenue that's generated. And we can figure out about what we can rely on from past history. So, this amount has not been in the budget because Pride has not been here in this capacity, if I remember correctly, in the past. So, in, in my mind, this is kind of on top of the revenue that we would have budgeted for.
This is simply, if the Pride of Baltimore came here and paid us, we would have $2,550 of revenue.
Right.
If the Pride of Baltimore comes here and you waive the fees, we will not have $25.50 of revenue. That's all this is.
Okay. I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These, these are very troubling. As, as a representative of, of my constituents, it was painful last year to go through this tax increase. And I just feel like we're treading, we're, we're still treading water, if you will, to make us whole. And, and because of that, we have to optimize our public, you know, our public streets, our public waterways. And we have to be very cognizant of, of where the limited opportunities where we generate revenue. And I, and I, and we can, you can rationalize any event for, of course, you can rationalize the purpose of this and all the good stuff. But my concern is the precedence it takes and, and where, where do we stop? And I'm, I'm very troubled by this because I listen to my constituents and they, they have to touch, feel, see, and hear how an event affects them. Because we're asking them to take it out of their pocketbook, even though it's a couple of thousand dollars here and $3,000 there. And they're asking us to represent them. And I, I, I'm just very troubled. And I, on this one, I just, I just, because of the shoreline and, and the good work that Beth Bellis does, I, I just don't want this to set a precedent. Thank you.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if I heard it correctly or not, but I think I heard Mr. Evans speak about the opportunities for children. I didn't know if there were some aggressive opportunities for our children, especially those who wouldn't necessarily have the opportunity to come and visit the Pride, if there's some Anaronda County Public School connection, is there some kind of hacker connection to bring these children down to this Pride of Baltimore? If there is, for me, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I would certainly feel a lot better if there was something afoot. And I don't, I'm not going to ask Mr. Evans to come back up here, but I, I think that's something that's extremely important, to have children who wouldn't necessarily have this opportunity to come down to see the Pride, get on the Pride, and, and see how it operates. So, that might be something, in the meantime, that you can talk to Anaronda County Public Schools about. Ms. Jolynn Davis is the Regional Area Assistant Superintendent. She is over all the principals within the Annapolis feeder. So, that might be something that might be explored. Also, the Annapolis City Police Department might have a cadre of children. I know Ms. Patty and Lieutenant Kraus work with the children on a very regular basis. That might be something you can talk to them about as far as getting the children down to the Pride. So, I think if, if we can, in my mind, if we can bring that all to fruition, I like this idea even better. Thank you.
I think this will bring a lot of families downtown and drive revenue for the businesses. So, let us take a vote. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Peon?
Reluctantly, aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
No.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
Alderman Tierney?
No.
The motion passed.
Motion passes. Thank you. Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution R-10-19, 2019 Annapolis Film Festival Circulator Fee Waiver, for the purpose of identifying the 2019 Annapolis Film Festival Special Event that will be held during March 21 to 24, 2019, and waiving the fee for running the Circulator during that event.
Is there a motion to adopt R-10-19 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Alderman Savage?
Just have a question for the city manager about this. Just to clarify, so this is paying for the Circulator to go outside its normal range? Is it, is it outside its normal hours too, or just outside the normal range, like its normal stops?
It's definitely outside its normal range. And if you'll give me a minute, I'll tell, or Ms. Finlayson has the answer.
I'd like to answer for you. And I just sent you, and Mr. Gordon, please, I just sent, well, early in the evening, I sent you a copy of the schedule. And as you can see, it only deviates from Park Place to go to Maryland Hall. Just to give a little bit of background, earlier last week, I met with Mr. Gordon, the owner of SP Plus, representative from Reston Limo, who is, we've outsourced the Circulator to, as well as film festival staff to redo what was originally proposed. If you recall, the price tag on that was $13,000.
$12,500.
$12,500. And so, we looked at the schedule. We looked at not only the Circulator's schedule, but the film festival's schedule to see how we could reduce the cost. And so, we redid it. And what you have in front of you now is the schedule. The participants of the film festival will ride the regular Circulator, except when they have to go to Maryland Hall. And there will be a transfer point at Park Place. And please correct me if I'm getting it wrong, Mr. Gordon. They'll pick up a, a different Circulator to go from Park Place to Maryland Hall. And again, that's the schedule that you have in front of you. We were able to reduce the cost of the Circulator for the four days from $12,500 down to $5,400. So, that's the document that you have in front of you. And to go a little bit further, as far as background is concerned, as you know, the film festival is in its fifth year. Traditionally, the Circulator has been free to participants. And previous city manager has given other, has, has waived the fees, let's just say. And, you know, we're doing things differently now, which is not a bad thing. But it was only very recently that the film festival folks realized that we were not conducting business as we had in the past years. They are nonprofit, and it really isn't fair to them that in the 11th hour, they get a big bill from the city who were partners with them. You know, the city's logo is right up there with everybody else who partners in far greater levels than the city does. I can't, and Ms. White and Ms. Anderson are in the audience, who can speak to this far better than I can, but the thousands of people who come into the city over this four-day period to view the 70 films, from feature films down to shorts by kids in our local schools, it's a phenomenal boon for the city. They are nonprofit, and so I am requesting that we waive the $5,425 of the new cost of, and I want to say, the negotiated route for the Circulator. Mr. Gordon, did I leave out anything?
No, you did very well, Alderman.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend my colleague, Alderman Finlayson, for having this meeting last week, which was very productive because the initial quote was actually more than, than what they needed. And, and the, the net result is, is to have a logistical plan that, that works for everybody. This is, this is an example where precedent was set, and it's hard to take away when you've already given somebody something. But in, with that framework, we did, you know, get it down to a, to a number that is best we can, and, and it's optimal for the Circ. So, thank you again, Alderman Finlayson.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you know what I'm going to say. I like movies as much as the next person. And I have gone to this, and I do think that it's a credit to the city of Annapolis and has been quite successful. But unlike Mr. Evans' argument for the previous waiver, this one isn't a zero cost. And again, the costs don't go away. They go to somebody else to pay. I recognize that this is also a change in procedure at the last minute, and I find that to be very regrettable. But at some point, we're going to have to learn to say no. And I've reached that. And I've reached that point, so that is what my vote will be.
Okay. Alderman Savage?
So it seems like there are no, there's no requirement out there for them to get these waiver requests in by a certain time before the event?
Clarification from the city manager, please?
Those who want to hold a special event, fill out the appropriate special event application form, which gets submitted to the special events coordinator, which is Felicia Nolan, who reaches out to the departments to get estimates of the costs that will be incurred for the event. So until someone makes an application, the departments don't put together an estimate of their costs.
And what's the date of this event again?
March 21 through 24.
Okay.
Alderman Penn?
Mr. Mayor, I share concern on a fairness basis when somebody isn't notified that things aren't the same as they have been until, relatively speaking, the last minute. I know that I experienced that with regard to some friends of mine who run the St. Patrick's Day Parade and, well, we all know what a terrific success that that was yesterday and has been every year they've ever had it. What I might suggest in deference to that is, say, waiving fees over $2,000 or something like that. I think that, you know, there's a big difference between a parade and, or the Pride coming here, Pride's providing free services, free, a free service to our population. The film festival, I have no doubt, is not a huge moneymaker by anybody's standards. And it's, having run the city's fireworks for 16 years and having to collect $30,000 or $40,000 every year, ending in 2001, it's probably double that amount in today's dollars in a very short period of time. I'm fully aware of the problem, but I do think that we need to say, "Okay, from here on out, as a matter of fact, we're going to collect at least a little bit from you this year." And I would amend the, move to amend the R-10-19 to that effect. This isn't something I planned on doing. Before I came in here tonight, I was under the misimpression that Alderman Finlayson was going to be offering a different number than this. And this isn't her fault. It's not because of a promise she made to me, for sure. But that was the impression I had. But I think, you know, a $2,000 fee this year is not unreasonable and with the understanding that from here on out, they're going to have to pay, going to have to pay for this.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Would you restate the motion?
That fees above, yeah, I know it, fees above $2,000 would in fact be waived by the city.
Point of clarification, what does that mean?
Well, I think I just spent a couple minutes explaining what it meant.
Well, clearly, I'm being very slow today because I still don't understand.
Well-
So what is it?
It says $5,425 is being waived in the staff report and I'm saying, "We'll waive all but $2,000 of the fee." In other words, it'll cost you $2,000 and not be totally waived.
Okay. So your motion is to waive $3,525?
Okay, I'll settle for that.
Okay.
Okay. City manager?
Thank you. So your resolution says, "Be it resolved at the city council, that the fee for running the Circulator is hereby," I'm leaving some words out, "is hereby waived." The fee right now is an estimate. You, Alderman Payon, are saying waive anything over $2,000. So they will pay us $2,000. If the fee is $5,425, we will waive $3,425. If the fee is $5,600, we'll waive $3,600. Are you trying, so you're trying to say waive all but $2,000? So that requires an amendment to the resolution on page two, lines 12 through 15.
Okay. So, we don't have a second, though? Is there a second? All right, no second? Okay, so, Madam City Clerk, let's call the roll on this. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Payon?
Yes.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
No.
Alderman Savage?
Abstain.
Alderman Arnett? He wants me to vote for him, so I'll say no twice.
Could I do that?
Alderman Tierney?
I'm voting yes for the waiver as in the stated amount.
The resolution passes.
Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you. You're good. And Ms. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The agenda is completed.
Okay. Is there anything else for good order? Alderman Payon?
I think moving for, I think moving, moving to close this out, Mr. Mayor, would be for the good of the order, for sure.
All those in favor of Fred's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That's the word I was looking for.
Well done.